Six thirty, I find this meeting of Manchester by the sea select board to order. John.
Yes.
Anne is here, Kathy, Brian.
And Jeff.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Are there public comments? On non-agenda items here or remote?
This need AI meeting of it is being recorded by AI.
Yeah, I just got an alert asking that. It may just be a new function of Zoom.
Or I know Debbie uses a separate tool outside his own, but. She downloaded the script.
Or has Deb been replaced by. Downsizing already.
So there's nothing in the chat.
Okay.
We'll bring it up.
Yeah, nobody's put up a hand and.
No.
Okay. Fine, um. I haven't got. A chairman's report. And is there anything anyone would like to do with the? With the agenda, with the action items? Great, um. The. Next item on the agenda is the review of the fire department's fee schedule. I gather to the chief this year.
The chief is on Zoom.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Yes, would you like to just? Give us an idea of what's changed?
Um, so the fees over the course of forever haven't really been updated. They were last updated in two thousand and twenty one. Doing a little research and comparing us to about thirty to thirty five different communities. I found that other communities were charging for some things that we weren't. So I compiled the list and basically I took the ones that made the most sense for Manchester. Added those in. The one thing that you'll see is the admin fees are new. A lot of our inspections and the fees that are associated with them, the fees is determined by mass general law. We are able to add a administrative fee on top of it because we're going to electronic records management system. And we can kind of prove that there's an added cost over and above the traditional permit fee historically. So in the areas in which we can do that, I have done that. And I've also documented the mass general law that correlates to each inspection when relevant.
I'm intrigued that we went to a, a, a. An electronic record system and it's more administrative work than it was without it.
It's more the cost of the records management system. Of the ongoing upkeep of it, not so much personnel hours, it's technological fees, if you would.
Anyone?
And this is consistent with our communities.
Yes.
Yeah, my only question was, um, how, you know? Had you taken a look at? How, whether or not some of these fees really cover the cost of the fees of the actions that you're taking?
Yeah, um, so in doing so, I have to say, obviously, the fee itself within the mass general law guideline on some of those. Ones that we did add that I saw a need for, you'll see the cooking fires on Singing Beach. Historically, those have been free. Upgrading that to ten dollars and then also adding a fee on to if a, um, somebody's found having a cooking fire without a permit. That's come up a few times this year, so that's a newer one. And the other one was inspector for inspections for liquor licenses. Historically, we did not charge a fee for that, but, um, obviously that takes time and staff hours to complete those, document those. And then correlate with the or coordinate rather with the other town departments.
So I guess, so that's great. And then my only other question is, how, how are we collecting the fees? Is the collection? Non-labor intensive as well?
Yes, so we have three different avenues. We can do fees. We'll be rolling out a full online system. Our vendors are just getting that up, but we can do credit cards. They can do automatically online. They can. Burning permits, for instance, is a great example, went live this year through our system. The resident just goes on to their portal, gets a burning permit, pays for it, and then it comes into a queue system for myself or the captain to just basically put our eyes on it and approve the permit. Other ones, obviously, permits are tied to inspections as well. So sometimes there's multiple things going on, permits and inspections.
Thank you.
What's a tent permit? Just curious.
So for large events, if people have a large tent on their property. They need to have fire extinguishers, carbon dioxide detectors, depending on what type of heating elements are being used for foods and things like that. We see those for a lot of the weddings on some of the estates. On the ocean.
So are these the maximum we can charge under the state?
Yes, and these are the maximum that I found from any community, basically, from the thirty five different communities that I polled.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, so when you you updated these, your fee can be any number up to the max here?
Correct with the, uh, so for instance, like a smoke detector inspection, mass general law dictates it's fifty dollars and there's no administrative fee. So sometimes depending on what the burbage is in the code, we can, or if it's silent, then we can charge an administrative fee.
Okay, and and that was done based upon referencing other communities because that's not a mass general law requirement or.
Current.
Okay, and a question on these annual fees, is that, does annual just mean if somebody comes in and gets one of those annual? Annual permits, it's good for a year for whenever they got it?
Correct.
Okay, it's not like it's renewed. If they renew it two years from now, well, then the clock starts again when they renew it.
Exactly.
Okay, I'd understand that. Okay.
One other question, we have a carnival coming up in October. Right? All those trailers, who do we have to inspect those trailers? The residents is there? Is that police? Is that you? Is that?
All of the above. So the food trailers typically are the propane is licensed in the community in which they reside. For instance, I just did a food trailer this morning for one that it home bases Manchester. Then the board of health has to come in and do a visual inspection of it actually set up. And typically we'll do a walkthrough just to make sure that everything looks copseatic.
Oh. Ignorance, what are hot works?
Welding, brazing of pipes, things like, things of that nature.
Okay, so something a plumber might be doing.
Open flame or?
Yeah, open flame. Typically, the, um, a plumber fixing a water line does not constitute a hot works permit. If they're brazing or if they're welding steel would be one. And there's certain caveats to that based upon occupancy classifications as well. You know, if it's a high hazard occupancy, that might trigger a hot works permit in a detail.
Another question, how many permits are issued per year, typical year, and what's the revenue associated with that?
That is a great question. I will have to get back to on, I can probably shoot you an email on twenty minutes when I just pull a report. At a time.
And you have very many, I see on the bottom, reinspection fee. This is whatever, certain inspections, there were problems. Does that happen very often or?
It happens probably once or twice a week and it's unfortunately usually the same. People. Real estate agents, things like that, that basically should know better. And this is just a mechanism to make sure that when we go out, it's done right the first time. And many times the guys will go by and actually do a pre-visit and we don't charge for those. It's when we're actually out there to do the inspection. Okay.
All right, this is like real estate agents, fire, fire detectors, things like that.
Yeah.
They've got to have.
Yep.
Any questions? Here or remote? Okay.
A motion?
Yes.
A move that the select board approved the fee scheduled as recommended by the fire chief.
Second. Jeff.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Anne says yes and John.
Yes.
And just if it's okay with you guys for implementation of October first, just so I can do some notifications. And things like that.
Is that okay with us? The odds all around, yeah.
Sure.
Perfect, thank you.
Right, the next item on the agenda is the North Shore Regional nine one one update. Assume that. Our. Officers are here. Talk about that.
Yes, and you have, you have a memo in the backup with some statistics there. The chief and I had a call with North Shore Regional today to kind of go through some of those statistics and some get some other updates. I'll let the chief really give the the overall, but. It, you know, from my understanding and it sounds like we're having a very good experience with North Shore Regional. They're fully staffed. They're looking to staff up even a little bit more because they have North Reading joining by the fall of this year. And it seems like we're, we're, things are going really well and took a bunch of notes, but I'll.
Yeah, no, I think. Just follow from what Tony said, so Jake and I continue to be involved in the chief executive boards. So we get regular updates of them. North Reading is going in finalizing their onboarding fall of twenty five. Raleigh has recently gone in. They went in kind of like we did on a emergency faster pace because they were losing staff. Boxford is, looks like the beginning, excuse me, Groveland is in December, January timeframe, they'll be going in. Boxford is sometime in two thousand and twenty six later on. And Hamilton should make a final decision sometime in September. When they, when or they will go in or not. Their staffing, they got five new hires, she told us today, and seven in the pipeline that should cover the. New onboarding. Communities and things that we've done this year. One of the things that Regional took over is to help us with radio infrastructure in the Magnolia area of town. And Jake could probably comment more on that because he was more more involved than I was. So those are some of the high level things that we discussed today.
No, I just, you know, I think that they've, the staff has spent a lot of time with police and fire here. With, you know, whether that be trainings or ride alongs or continued communication. They've talked to, they've done some training on terminology with the fire department and the blue card. Incident training so that when they are dispatching and they're getting information back and forth between our staff and their staff. They're able to, you know, do that efficiently. So it sounds like. It's been going really well and the fact that they've staffed up and are going to staff up even more. Doesn't raise any sort of concern for us. They give us an annual report on their, you know, their timing rates. So we'll monitor that on an annual basis to make sure there's nothing, no issues.
What are their timing rates?
They're, they're, they were gonna send me the report and she may have sent it to me after we got off the call, but. I haven't looked through it. They, they basically, they measure from when the phone rings. Until when they pick up, you know, so from ring to pickup time and then from pickup time to dispatch time. Every other, you know, after that, the response timing is really on us, on us. So what we would want to keep an eye on is that, you know, their staff levels are high enough or staffed well enough that, you know, on their end, there's no. Extend.
Not ringing and ringing and ringing.
Exactly, but it sounds like there hasn't been, and they, they said that when they've onboarded Manchester by the sea was, it was, you know. Like a model. Process.
Got the ball rolling while they're on the.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were the first.
Think a lot of other communities were waiting to see how our onboarding went and they saw how well it went, so they jumped on board.
You're at discount.
A little bit of something every time.
Some of those calls, I want a piece.
So how much, how much input do you have before they take on a new customer?
They discuss it at these meetings when, you know, the, the executive meetings with the chiefs and the town administrators and then there's a vote.
Okay, so there is a vote. You, I just want to make sure we are voting because that was one of the things. That the existing communities had to let us in, right? I want, I just wanted to make sure that is still the case. Okay, okay.
The, just I'm looking at this, so the fireworks, that was Nemlex trailer.
That was by the, the.
Okay, and then there was staffed by. I would strongly urge you guys to take a look at that next, we're gonna do it again this year. Todd took me through it last fireworks and there was a call going on while we were there.
Yeah.
It was the best, so I would, if you got an opportunity, want to set up.
I'm looking at the statistics and it looks like. From twenty four to twenty five, you've gone at the rate we are, will be like. Twenty five percent more than last year, is that about right?
It's more, yeah, twenty twenty five.
Yeah. So is that? Is there a reason for that or?
I think it's accurate, more accurate record management system.
So it's not that maybe not.
Well, I think some of the call, the call volume has definitely gone up of both police and fire. Jake can speak to the fire department, but I think on our end, most of it is the new record management system that's accurately logging these calls.
Yeah, I just noticed that I was.
Look one down, oh, it's only half a year.
Right, yeah.
And, and I also think it's the better training, it's a better quality product, so, so better information is going in because we've had better training. So it's just, it's all about what you're putting into it, so it's getting better as we do.
And I, I will add that they're very receptive when we've had some questions or comments from the public that we investigate. They're receptive, they give us all the information, they give us the recording. And, you know, a lot of times people, when they call nine one one overstressed, they don't want to ask questions, but those questions are really important, especially on the medical side of things. Because they can give pre-arrival instructions and they're going to dictate the level of service that is dispatched, especially if there's multiple calls going on, so. You know, I can't speak high enough of them. They do a great job, they're professional and more importantly, they're responsive to any issues or inquiries that we make.
So when you say the record management system, we've been on the system now, what, three years or something? So in other words, I'm assuming they changed the record management system and all of a sudden there was a change in the data that it was at one trend or maybe no trend.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden it jumped. It's not like it's been going straight up. Okay, so I understand the conclusion.
Is your feeling as a long-term officer that actually the actual call volume is, is up or?
I think the, our call volume is up, especially mental health calls. I think that's a component of it, but I think that. The information that's going into this system is better. And it's tracking what we're doing better.
Okay.
So when we went on the system. Originally, we had some. Duplicate systems here in Manchester that we were considering getting rid of, so we don't pay, we still have them.
Still have.
Okay. And. And is it? Do we know why that is? Is it just, we really like them better or is it, you just don't have the time and energy or money to?
We don't have the, can't find someone to adequately put, take the data out of the old system and put it into the.
So it's data conversion.
Plus it's the cost.
So your historical data is still in the old system. Okay, so.
Some of it, I mean, some of it we have to keep forever. Some of it we don't really need to keep, so. After talking with town council.
Yeah.
When Greg was here at the time, we decided it's easier and quicker to take everything and put it in that rather than. Than, than, than the vicarages and try and go through it all. Less and it'd be more costly.
Your IT group helped you make that decision?
IT, yeah.
Okay. Just because historical data. You know, there's always some new fangled technology. You remember, did you ever use a floppy drive, right? Right, and then, oh, we had to get rid of those, so we had to decide what to keep and what, so the innovation isn't. Done and it will never be done, so you have to think of the historical data as baggage. And over time, the cost of that baggage does start to increase. So I think, Tony, as we enter into budget season, it's always worth taking a look at, gosh, is it, is it cheaper to get rid of the baggage? Or is it cheaper to carry?
It's going to be, long term, it's going to be cheaper to spend the money now to have it.
That's, that's what I'm, I'm forty years in IT is what I'm kind of getting at, so thank you, yes. Fast way of saying it, so we have to figure out a way of. Understanding what data we have to keep and just. Do the dirty deed and get it over, you know, to the new system or to archive, you know, sometimes it's just an archive that you look at and don't touch. You may not need the, the data in the new system, you just have a separate cheap archive system, but over time that gets very expensive.
If I remember correctly, off the top of my head, we're paying about seventy five hundred a year for the old system and the cost was about twenty four thousand.
Yeah, and, and is it running on old computers like? Yeah, so that's, that's just going to get ugly. We've got to bite the bullet and figure out a plan there. Okay, thank you.
Is the problem with upgrading? Finance, money or finding someone who can do it?
I don't think it was money, so to speak, but it was finding someone, finding someone with the skills to do it, right?
Well, you can always find someone with the skills, but it's a rarer and rarer skill, the longer you wait and therefore it gets more and more expensive. And therefore that's, it's always a matter of money and the rarer the skill, the more money you have to pay to get.
So we thought it's also, it's not just the skill of converting the data or.
Understanding the data, yes.
Yeah, what you have to keep or.
So we thought we had someone because Beverly just switched the IMC from the system that we still had. In the regional work list to give him, to give us a proposal, but then all of a sudden he was like, no, I'm not doing it.
Yeah, yeah. We're getting, I'm, I'm on the young side, I'll just say, of the technologists that you are talking about. You have a window of opportunity and you need to get on it, otherwise it's just gone.
I'll just add that, and Chief, if you don't mind, I'll add that, you know, having regional nine one one, especially right now, we have, we have a few officers that are out on leave. Maternity leave or paternity leave and, you know, so having regional. And avoiding having to actually man the, the front desk there really helps us out, you know, as, as far as having officers on the street. As far as overtime costs, things of that nature, so there's another huge benefit there and it's, and it's being seen right now.
Currently, we have four people, four full-time people. Actually.
Wow.
So we haven't been managing or staffing the, the, you know, the desk, so what we ended up doing was having the officer in charge of the cell phone. Regionals transferring calls to that cell phone rather than have them come off the street.
Sounds as if you're moving into the twenty first century.
Father relationship is doing well or?
Jake, do you want to add anything?
I know, I, I think that it's going very well and it's, um, there's a lot more coordination, I think you think adding in a third. Department, if you would, a dispatch department, it's actually brought all of us closer. Just because we can concentrate on our area and then it makes all the areas flow so much more smoothly.
What an excellent outcome.
Yes.
And I can certainly testify that when you call.
Excellent, thank you very much.
May I ask before the police, chief of police leaves, because it's hard to find him, I have something very good about him that I would like. It's.
If you have something nice to say.
Very nice, okay, because I wanted to appreciate what they have done for my husband this past year. And I'm sure you were maybe told by the two young men who went to the train. Yes, because I, Tim and I had gone, I didn't know that the chief would be here tonight. And I went to the police station, I got the names of the young men, but. We had gone to the INR for his checkup and because the train was coming, I said, we're not taking this one, I'm going to Shaw's, you stay here, pass in, but stay. Well, twenty minutes later, my husband was gone, so I thought he had gone someplace anywhere, I was crazy a little bit, I didn't know what happened. They were very helpful there to go everywhere looking and so on. They assumed that he took the train, that he was leaving to come to Manchester, so they go in touch with you, I suppose, here at the department.
I see all of them.
Because they were down, I was told by my sons when I asked them to go and see if their father was arriving, that they were two, Tim told me, they were two young men, were very nice. And I have to say that the, the ones who have accounted, accounted, you know, police anywhere for anything, they have been very nice people. Including the gift ticket ones, you know. And they're very polite, were very nice and. They. My husband said that they were very nice two young men, one was that, who remember the other person's name? I can't find out who he was, tried something. And they offered to take him home because they thought maybe he might be in trouble or, yeah, I said, no, I like the exercise. I just wanted to thank them. They were, they have been always very nice.
Okay. Is there anything else to be said about? Regional nine one one? Nope.
Oh, and if they need a nice guy, our youngest son worked for sixteen years in a big IT place. In a mobile.
All right, can I follow?
Hey, um. These are on reports, John.
Let's see. For the DPW, they're signing a contract this week, I think with regard to a contractor who will install the meters. And so that should happen, start, start to go within the next few weeks, but I know they have a contract out to a final bidder that they've decided on. And second, they've added some better marking on the footpath between the parking lot and downtown back here. I don't know if you.
I saw it on the weekend, I noticed it right away, it was very helpful.
So they've got, they painted on the, on the, on the asphalt, some arrows and things and comment, it's the way to downtown, et cetera. And they'll also be trimming, in fact, maybe taking down, I think, a couple of the trees along the pathway that are. Well, they're dirty in the sense they're dropping branches, they're not really. Offering a whole lot to the, said, the. The pathway there, so I think they're going to take, take a couple of trees down, but I think that's an Henderson's. Henderson has put some X's on a few trees, so they'll, they'll come down. With regard to the historic district commission, they had a meeting last Thursday and they approved some solar panels on a house. In, on Harbor Street, or I, I guess on, on Bridge Street. And it's a house that has a couple of flat roofs on either side of the houses, like a solarium area, and the roofs are flat. Because otherwise, they could never do this in the historic district and especially on the harbor, because on the harbor, both the front and the back of the house are public ways. Because on the harbor, that's a public way, so, but these panels are not on, on the slanted roof, they are on. The flat roofs on either side, and I guess they can angle them probably five or ten degrees, you're still not going to see them because the roofs are flat, so it worked out, but. And then all the time that I've been associated with the HDC, we've only approved one solar panel and it was back over behind chapel or. You know, in the houses that, that are, that are over here and it was really totally out of sight, so. They did approve those solar panels and that's a novel. Novel approval, I think. And other than that, council on aging the seniors, still questions about the docs, how that's coming. And uh, other than that, council on aging the seniors, still questions about the docs, how that's coming. Um, there was an ad in the cricket on K A. I don't know if you saw that this past this past uh week, so that's happening and I'll be.
Why?
Taking your time with K A. In fact, you're a candidate.
Some of us have got mailings from too much.
Oh, okay.
I got.
Okay, great.
Well, that's because you're a child.
That's the good news.
There you go.
All right, so that's it for me.
Yeah.
Uh, planning board, um, had a discussion about proposed changes. Um, zoning in the downtown or making a downtown district. Um, but without getting too crazy into this, it's mostly based around. Kind of limiting uh. Commercial changing into residential, I would say is the bulk of the whole. Proposed zoning changes. Mostly two families, three families, four families, things of that nature. Um. Eli asked them about town meeting. And said they'd have to be pretty much ready by big December, early September. And I don't know if they'll be ready with this, so. I would kinda think not, but I guess we'll see what happens. Um, there was a little talk about uh change and not really even a change, just driveways. Uh permitting and that was pretty much just like cleanup language.
This is the two entrance?
Well, some of it was um more about access for um. Emergency vehicles and uh stuff like that and then um. Wasn't grandfathering in existing driveways and things of that nature.
Jake had mentioned that they were going through and checking entrances to as far as their uh approach to the uh. Yeah, the community firefighting, I guess, if it was checking.
Yeah, so I think they're trying to make the zoning reflect the spirits. And uh, yeah, that's pretty much all about it.
The P O X rec uh, which is winding down or not struggling. But they'll get through it because Kizley, this staff goes off to college, but that's a an annual event. Cheryl's Houston in in one. And uh. Heather is starting to crank up now for after-school programs. Tuesdays and Thursdays are sold out. They opened up and uh, I think they opened it up on the first of July. And that's historic, there's always those two dates for historic. As far as any other events, the uh. We should be seeing something about the uh carnival soon. Gonna be scaled back carnival. Many vendors, because now modified, but. Most of them are more concerned about just getting the kind. That'll be a scaled back version, but it'll still be the same amount of. Uh, apparatus, there's still still see the same kind of visitors. Out of town visitors. The time of what race is coming up too, so. Get that on your calendar. October twelve. So I will be reaching out to. Uh, everyone, as far as public safety goes, Chuck with the uh, removing the cardboard. Jake and uh, and Todd. So, yeah, I'll keep him.
New wet suit or?
I don't know. I'm I might borrow it.
Brave Andrew.
You have people looking at it. It's it's kinda like anything else. You open up your mouth and then you gotta follow through it. It's up for the point. So that, and so that's that, that got to that, yeah. Right, as E B A, nothing going on this month, so there's nothing new in it with the zoning board. And, yeah.
Bike and Ped meets later this week, so nothing there. Downtown Improvement doesn't meet again until September. Um, we had our first facilities planning committee meeting on Friday, which is kind of a get-to-know-you meeting. Uh, everyone went around and introduced themselves and um, we discussed um. You know, some some goals, the committee. I think one of the things that. Uh, we we pushed on a little bit is that some of the harbor projects, like the Harbor Master um building or whatever. Uh, was initially deemed out of scope. So I think we kinda pushed on that a little bit. So I think we have some scope discussions we need to go through. Um, there are some things we discussed which are really not part of the scope or should be part of the scope. So I think, you know, whenever our company is solid on what the scope needs to be. And then um, the the team is Chuck and Nate are gonna take some folks on tour for. Like four places this Friday, the police station, fire station, Essex, Public Safety Building and the D P W Building. Did I miss anything? Okay, I can't go on any of them, so Chuck's gonna give me a guided tour of D P W. And I think maybe one other person on the committee can't make it this Friday as well, so we'll try and. Coordinate um what we've missed. But um, you know, other than that, I I think it's it's good. It's just, we've gotta get crisp on our scope. And then uh, we're gonna push on some next steps and I would say next steps as opposed to timeline. Lots more to come here.
The school committee will not be meeting tomorrow. Um, their next meeting is on September second. Which is the same time we're meeting, so. Um, that's not gonna be a good time to introduce you.
No.
Uh, I did make it to a. For health meeting of. Where they approved a. Preliminary subject plan for um, the construction way out on some, out on Summer Street. Wait, it's it's an interesting little piece because there's a very strong cliff. And the 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 subject system is down here and the house is up.
Oh, wow.
Well, no.
You know what they say, shit rolls downhill.
Yes, and it will.
Um, it's the um, Dew Desmond Avenue, um. The hearing had been scheduled for the day after this meeting. Um, they have already decided. To postpone that for thirty days and made some conditions. Um, one of them was that the. Housing, uh, yeah, right. Yeah, Wendy uh, be allowed into that house and I gather she has been. Um, and there that that they have uh. By the twenty eighth, which is the next Board of Health meeting, that they have either uh. A sign up by the plumbing inspector or um word from the. Uh, from a plumber with a contract saying what the scope of work is and how. How he's gonna approach, how it's gonna be approached. Um, and at that point, the thirty days will be very early over. Um, so or. They will decide whether to extend for another thirty days or just um go ahead with. Right.
Reception.
Re- receivership, yeah, sorry. And. That's that, nothing else that I'm looking at means until later. We have the, I think that's the liaison office. Um, we have um, the consent agenda. I have a couple of, a few nits um, on the consent agenda. And. I don't know. Yeah, I mean. Movement is not very interesting. Um, in the August fourth. I don't think that he, John, mentioned that residents had requested handicap parking at West Beach.
Yes, I did. I had a chat with um. Uh, Chuck or I guess it was Nate this afternoon about the feasibility of doing something like that. It didn't make too much. Sense because basically if you put up a sign that says this is handicap parking, the whole space and its surrounding has to meet certain criteria. And you're on a beach.
Yeah, right.
And sand and everything else. And this was somebody that had come up, come by during the the festival. And as he said, practically speaking, it does not make sense. I guess there was one instance where all the cars were blocked. The areas, you know, they're all rocks except for two different areas that you could uh gain access. And both of those were blocked by cars, so somebody, I think, in a wheelchair could not really get on the beach, but. It's a rare situation, so I think it's gonna take a pass on that.
But you're just talking the the actual. Residents have requested handicap parking at West Beach.
Does it say west or does it say? Oh, it's 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 white.
It's white, yeah.
Yeah. Um. Just because it's one of my top buttons. Um, the scoreboard is at the Burke Street Field or the Coach Ed Field Field. Um. Coach Ed Field was my homeroom teacher.
He was mine too, so. He was he's spanned a couple.
Um, and I I was.
Do you pass together at school?
I probably went with your mother. Um, no, uh.
The only other, well, I have a comment on the Boston Post Kane.
Okay, well, when.
Are we in consent agenda items?
Consent agenda items, I'm still.
Going down your to do.
Going down my do list. Um. The transfers, and I've forgotten where they are. Um, it would be nice if, when they're documenting transfers, it's where it came from and as well as where it went to. Um. The other materials are available, but somebody who's just going to figure out what's going on would be easier if they. Um. If if the in and out were both, were both family. And then I'm prepared to approve the the minutes subject to those directions. Very much.
Make a, I moved the select board, approved the consent agenda items as listed, well. With um. With changes, yes.
Yeah.
A second.
Yes.
Answers, yes.
You get what you pay for it.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, there is a date for that.
Okay, good.
August twenty seventh, one P M. The twenty something Ben three. The city.
Okay.
Let me see, I think I wrote that down here, something uh, twenty nine Bennett Street, across the street from Todd Fitzgerald. In fact, Todd's gonna be there because it's his neighbor. Carolyn Anderson is ninety nine years old. And apparently very with.
We're a long time since we'll join.
All right, so if you guys can make it. Great.
What time is that?
One o'clock on August twenty seventh, Wednesday.
That's nap time. I'll be supervising, I'll be supervising nap time.
Twenty, twenty nine or?
August twenty seven, at at twenty nine Bennett.
At twenty nine, okay.
There's an award I'll never get, that's for sure.
So, well, the best award he's passed few years, it's been, they managed to do two years in a row. And in fact, I was speaking with Debbie. She, they they award the cane in Rockport. They call it the tech cane. Cause I'm a little morbid, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These are.
Yeah, if you win it once and you still want to do it the other day.
No power to you.
Well, some new, some of the old could move into town, right?
That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, um, I look forward to meeting her and as many of you who can make it should look forward to that too.
Yes, thank you. Uh, the state approved our M B T A three A zoning. Last week, I believe, uh, we were notified, so even though it's been a while. Um, it did get approved and I think it's worth, you know, repeating the, I'm sure the many um accolades or. Uh, that have been provided to those who worked on it, but I know that's a, that was a. Uh, a big task for our town and many towns and the planning board and um, select board and. Members of the town meeting and anyone else who worked on that. Um, that was a, that was a big lift and, you know, having it approved was kinda the.
Is it?
Last step in the process.
The the attorney general had to approve things. This is the E O H L C.
This one had to, yeah, this one, uh, the Attorney General's Office and E O H L C worked closely together on including, you know, the. Every every town had very different approaches, so making sure that it was compliant with uh state law. And ours is, so that's good.
So there are no more hurdles?
No more hurdles. On Thursday, we have our uh workshop meeting uh at five thirty. Uh, talked with John a little bit about.
I thought it was six, it's five thirty.
Uh, we did five thirty because that's how you had it scheduled la- the last time you did.
Guys, have fun. I'm gonna wait next week, so.
No, it's coming Thursday.
It's coming.
Thursday.
Three days.
It's Thursday.
Yes. You almost got out of it. Um, so.
You like me and show up late anyway because you thought it was.
Yeah, he shuts up at seven.
I thought it was later, so it's, I want to, I'm sure it's five thirty. I'll put that on the calendar.
Thirty and.
Here, right, room seven or room?
Room seven. Uh, we pulled up the uh. PowerPoint that Greg had put together for the last uh, the last time you guys met. And it did look to, you know, goals, priorities. We've talked in this setting about. Um, transfer of responsibilities and things of that nature, so. Um, if you have anything you want me to include in that uh agenda or PowerPoint. Send it over ahead of time and I'll, or we can just go through it at the meeting.
You have uh Brett's presentation from last year, can you?
Yeah. I, so I, yes.
But just a link to.
I have a scanned version of it that I scanned today. I haven't found the electronic version of it yet.
Okay, yeah, because our email gets deleted every thirty days and I didn't see.
Yeah. The Republic strike is ongoing. Uh, we've, we've tried to work with them on getting recycling back here. Uh, they weren't able to do it this week. We will continue to meet. Uh, with them and talk to them daily about, you know, need for them to uh, need to get their. Uh, services up to speed. Uh, we haven't received a bill yet uh for the month of July. I've heard of other communities that have received a bill and that it was adjusted for the services that they actually provided, which is a good sign. I'm happy to hear that. Certainly, if we got a full bill, we'd be adjusting it ourselves.
Are we tracking what we're spending?
Yes.
Extras, so we're tracking that separately, right?
Yes, we're not, we're tracking where they are falling short and any additional costs that we're taking on.
D P W guys.
Yes.
What what does the contract say about their responsibilities?
So, our our contract has a force majeure uh section in it that actually. Protects Republic uh from damages due to a strike. Uh, but there are um fees that we can impose for missed services and things of that nature. Uh, what we've, what we have done with the thirteen other communities has have sent a letter to Republic. And in conversation with them that uh, we don't plan on, you know, paying them. The full rate because of the causes of the strike. Um, we'll see how that works out later on and how Republic will respond to that. Uh, cause legally the contract, um, you know, does provide them some protection, but our council along with. Many of these other towns are, you know, gearing up for that conversation.
When is their contract over?
The end of this fiscal year.
Are there alternative alternatives?
Yeah, um. The, one of the big topics we'll talk, we're gonna talk about this Thursday night. Um, is getting ourselves prepared for. That uh contract being up and potentially going out to bid or renewing. that, uh, contract being up and potentially going out to bid or renewing with Republic. But procurement law doesn't require that we bid out, uh, waste services, so we, um, it, it is our choice. Uh, however, automated collection, uniform barrels and automated collection is what will drive competition through a procurement process. And so in order to, if we want to, you know, put the, the most attractive procurement on the table, we have some work to do on our end to think about that. Uh, there are, we've been looking at D E P grants, uh, related to uniform barrels, but there's a lot of, you know, public process with that. It's a big, it would be a big change for our town.
And so there are people who can't handle above.
Yeah, there's, there's a few different ways we can go with the sizes of those barrels and, um, options that we can give the residents, how that would change the bag situation that we currently use. Um, again, I think there's a, there's a, there's a large, uh, upfront public process that we can do to get some input from residents ahead of time, uh, versus just dropping off, you know, barrels on their front step, uh, saying, hey, this is all changed. That also dovetails into, you know, a waste, um, enterprise account potential, you know, we could look at that as an, as a, as a piece of that conversation, so. We expect that even without this strike, the contract would increase significantly because the current contract was a holdover from the J R M contract. So we were already really enjoying a, a good rate through that contract, which was inevitably going to go up. Now with the strike, it probably, I'm sure, uh, will be even more of a cost impact. Uh, but there's a lot of environmental benefits to having uniform barrels, um, you know, from keeping things from littering all over town every time we have curbside collection. Uh, and then having the transfer station is, I mean, what, what we have in Manchester is really a, a premium offer. Most towns either have one or the other. So, um, that's definitely going to be a big topic for the upcoming year.
And, and, and we can talk about it at length, uh, in two, three days.
Yes. Um, we had a, uh, MBTA, uh, municipal coordination meeting, uh, last week or the week before. Uh, I have, I'm going to be scheduling a follow-up meeting with them. Really, this was to talk about preparing for the winter season, uh, who's maintaining the bus stops, how are they maintaining them, um, the train stations? More of a general, hey, let's get ready for snow season, how can, they also are having issues with, uh, the, the, the crossings and salt building up in the, in where, where our road crossings are, uh, in every town. And so coming up with maybe a different way of how to approach those areas and coordinating that with the DPW. But I did ask them if we could do a one-on-one meeting here in Manchester for, to talk a little bit more specific about some of the issues that you brought up at our last select board meeting, so we're getting that.
The other thing too, I learned in the meantime was, um, it appears, I have, I, let's put it this way, I have found no evidence that the seventy whatever parking spaces that are MBTA spaces are being managed.
Right.
So given our dire need of parking in the downtown, it's a waste to just let them, whoever wants to park there can park there for as long as they want. They appear to be completely unmanaged.
Yeah, I don't think they really ever have.
Right, and that's a lost opportunity when we're talking about, you know, and today I went, I just tried to go to Dunkin's at nine o'clock. Boy, you couldn't find parking anywhere or anything. And, and so it's just, I, I think that has to be a subject of, um, what we might want to take a look at. Uh, you talked about next, next week, I mean, sorry, Thursday night, what are some subjects? Again, parking, you know, um, the, the, um, the boat placards we have here for the non-residents. I got to tell you, they go unused more often than they are full. And so is that something? Do we want to manage that capacity a little differently, maybe during the high months instead of allocating them to boaters for a full, you know, all of those spaces for an entire season? Or do we want to do it on the weekends or the, you know, so I just think we, the, the feedback we got from the last two parking studies is that we have plenty of parking spaces, but we don't manage them. And everything I am learning in the past, you know, month or two, I, I agree with that. We have a lot of white lines that are not being managed, so it's an opportunity.
I do see the placards are empty all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do see.
That's along the fence.
Yeah.
And, and just because resident only parking is managed from May one to October, that doesn't mean those placards, you know, need to be valid for that entire boating season. We could limit it to July and August or something and the rest of the year.
Just, just letting you use their placards and put all the spaces in the same pool.
You know, so I think there's options there. We, we, we could really do a lot to free up parking if we, you know, come up.
Yeah, maybe you're like, yeah, that's probably a good idea. Don't designate certain spots, just let them, wherever they find a spot, that's what you get, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, specifically to MBTA, I got the sense that they are looking for partners in the municipalities
Yep.
on management.
Yep.
And so I think like you, it, it's an opportunity there that we could, you know, help them and get a little something, you know.
That's right, and get some help from ourselves on what are we going to do about those train tracks that are going to be underwater and then not in distant future. So.
We've also, uh, been keeping a close eye on Hurricane Erin. Luckily, uh, it's, it looks like it's going to be heading offshore, uh, but it, as it was, uh, over the last like week or so, um, you know, there were some moments there of, you know, which way is this track going to head? And, um, it's the first hurricane of the season, um, and it, it drastically increased from a tropical storm to a hurricane five, uh, and picked up intensity. Is it?
I think, I think it was downgraded to a four now.
It's now downgrade.
Oh, great.
No, that's good. But for a moment there, it really picked up, yeah.
The waves are gonna come.
We're definitely going to see, yeah, rip tide and, and, but luckily it's.
Six or seven foot waves.
Thursday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday.
Do we have lifeguards?
Yeah, until the, uh,
You may want to.
Yeah, I think we do, yeah.
We can close off the, whatever, but yeah.
I think, I think it's fully staffed and we'll include both the draft house and lifeguards and whatever. The red flag up now.
Yeah.
I had a, uh, introductionary, an introduction meeting with the sustainability committee. I've been working on the COA director job description. I'm hoping to meet with the COA board to get their input. I've talked with, um, Brendan over in Essex too about some supplementary, um, services that we could find in the meantime. Though with this, you know, with this one, it's, uh, it's not as simple as just taking the old job description and reposting it because of the future of the Council on Aging with the new senior center. So we want to make sure that the job description is, you know, preparing us for the future. So it, it's, um, we're trying to get input from the friends, from the board, uh, from neighboring communities that have senior center and really make sure that we advertise it correctly. Um, we had a library, uh, site visit last week too, to talk about the grounds at the library. Uh, so with Chuck and Nate and some of the friends, uh, so we're working on some, uh, needs there after the generator was installed and some irrigation repairs and just general ground maintenance. Meet with Colonial Power this week on the municipal aggregation. Um, that has been approved by the state, so now we're going to really get into the rollout, um, process. And then, uh, early next week, uh, I'm going over to Essex on Monday or Tuesday, uh, Monday. Uh, Congressman Molton is coming to do a, uh, an event, uh, with the regional emergency management team to talk about, you know, federal funding and things of that nature. So I'll be, I'll be going over there on Monday too to, to be, make sure that we're present at the, at the event. And that's all I have.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, do it, John.
Second.
All in favor?
Nice.
Thank you very much.